Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 27, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting. I'd like to announce at this time that the board will be going into executive session, and we will entertain... The need to... There is a need for executive session to discuss contract negotiations, because an open meeting may be... May have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, with the intent to go back into open session once the executive session is done. I need a motion to go into executive session and a roll call to enter.
A second.
Aye.
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 Aye. And?
You just want to make clear that this is... That the subject matter is discussing the town administrator's contract.
Thank you. And duly noted that this is to discuss the town administrator's contract. We are now in executive session. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, once again. We are now going to continue with the Board of Selectmen's meeting for November 27th. Public participation, Mr. Mayor.
No, no one has signed in, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting for November 13th, 2017. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
To move.
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We need to schedule two public hearings. The first one is to vote to schedule a public hearing under Chapter 138 concerning alleged infraction by impossible discipline of Beer Island Corp., DBA Harringtons, at 1719 Water Street for January 8, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. A motion to schedule that hearing?
To move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Second vote to schedule a public hearing under Chapter 138 concerning alleged infractions by impossible discipline of Darkside at Wakefield Incorporated, DBA Darkside, your neighborhood family restaurant, at 1099 Main Street for January 8, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. Motion?
To move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Personnel appointments and resignations. We have a resignation by Mr. James Lappery from the Charter Review Committee. Motion to accept his resignation?
To move.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is appointment of the Community Branding and Wayfinding Advisory Committee with three openings. First, I'd like to thank all 13 members who actually put their name out to try to fill one of the three seats on here. That's very impressive of how many people want to be involved in determining what our branding is for the community. I think that's a great, great list of names here. I'm going to go around the table and get a feel from the Board as to, because the lists are so large, I just wouldn't have an idea of what they like. I mean, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to start with you and work our way around the table.
I wanted to have a motion on this, that we appoint Connor Beevy and Caitlin Dolan due to their background and their resumes that they sent in and I discussed with them. And I realize that there's 13 and there's going to be, you know, 10 unhappy people at the end of the day. So it's a difficult position to be in, but I think, from my perspective, I think these two are standouts.
Okay, so you made the opening with a motion. Do we want to move forward with the motion on that, or do we want to continue discussion?
I second the motion.
Seconded the motion for discussion, then. Let's go around the table for discussion, then. We have a motion seconded for discussion. Anybody have any comments?
If you've done the diligence, I haven't, so it sounds... First, I respect your thoughts.
I like those two names, and there are other names on there that I respect as well, but I like Connor Beevy's resume. He works in branding. I like his youth. He comes from a great family that is well entrenched in Wakefield, and I do think that's important to have a little historical perspective. I think Connor would be a wonderful addition and a nice, young voice to add, especially with his resume, the fact that he does this. Caitlin Dolan seems, her energy, she's also from a family that's well involved in Wakefield, her energy, she teaches at the Doyle School, and just by social media, her ability to engage and to excite and to be so, to put that kind of enthusiasm to this group, I think would be fabulous. Even though some people will be disappointed, it's a group, I think, I think there are so many names that people might drop out, others can join in, and we're just going to keep doing things in Wakefield, so these other folks will have a chance to volunteer, those that might not be chosen today. But that's why I think those two names are great names.
Tony, you're in.
I spend a lot of time trying to recruit folks to apply, and so we ended up with 13, and I'm happy to see that. And I think it really speaks to the enthusiasm we have within the town itself. So it's a nice problem to have, because I think we have a talented applicant pool. And I think the message should be conveyed to the 10 folks that may not be placed on this committee is that there would be a lot of other opportunities for them to be involved. And I think that we have a lot of great new names, new faces, who are looking to come on board that could be, you know, deployed in any number of capacities as we go along on this. I support Peter's nominations there. I have a third nomination, but I'll wait until we go through these first two, then I'll offer up the third. But I can't say how excited I am to see how many people have come together and really expressed a genuine interest in this.
It's a great number. 13 is a great number to have come out for three seats, so this is good. This is good. Anyone else have comments?
Just quickly, I agree with the sentiments on Connor Beevy. He's, you know, strong Wakefield roots. I know his parents for a long time, and the acorn, you know, did not fall far from the tree, so to speak. And he does this for a living. This is, you know, how he, you know, puts bread on the table, so to speak. So I would third that motion for him on the committee. And again, Katie Dolan, she puts, she is a teacher in the school system, so she does have that, you know, roots in Wakefield, and I would agree to that as well.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded, and we've had discussion. Is there any further comments on the motion? All in favor of nominating Caitlin Dolan and Connor Beevy as two of the three members to the branding committee?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Mr. Dombrowski.
So I wanted to make a motion to nominate Tom Watson for the third position.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yep.
So I've been in communication with Tom Watson. He reached out to me a number of months ago, I think now, expressing an interest in the downtown, and he's had a consistent interest. What I think helped him stand out a bit is, he has a background in design and project management, and he's actually worked directly with the VHB, who's one of our partners in the downtown initiative. So I think it's a natural fit. He had lived in Wakefield, and he lived outside of Wakefield for a bit, and then now has come back home. So I think he checks a lot of the boxes for what we're looking for in this particular committee. So I think he edges out some of the other candidates because of those unique attributes.
I'll speak as far as Tom Watson's concerned. He was one of the first ones that we appointed initially before we actually went out, put him out, a notice out for people to submit their interest. So he's already been contacted once, just to be told, hold off. We have to now have a different way of appointing people. So I agree with Mr. Watson. He did have a great background, from what I read and through my discussions with him. So I don't have an issue with Mr. Watson. Anybody else for comments?
So just two comments. So if Mr. Watson gets on, then what's the gender makeup of the group? Steve or Paul?
So you'd have...
Entire.
Wow, the entire group? Oh my God. Probably 50/50. You have to take into consideration that you have Susan, you have...
I'm looking for the list.
Yes, Susan. You have Caitlin. Katie, I mean.
Either one's okay.
No, Caitlin's the one from...
Steve has the list now.
21 people, including department heads and what have you. And of that, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. 8 women.
We just voted a 9, I think. Are you including Caitlin?
I think I did include Caitlin. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. I'm still counting 8. Because I think that the cooperative bank's split, but they're both women. So I just gave them one slot for that. Yep, 8.
So I think it's just important to look at those numbers as we assign. That's great, 8 out of 21. That's good. Not great, but it's good. And then the other thing, just to be aware of, you know, this was highlighted in the item. I had a lot of folks who didn't hear about it, and so I think as we do this in the future, it's great to have 13 people, but we just need to do a better job about recruiting, whether it be through our website, whether it be through our social media, but just get the word out there if people are interested in being involved. So, you know, you did personal recruitment, which is great. Let's do a better job next time. Even better job.
I should say, I didn't do personal recruitment. Anyone, when I posted a few months back, anyone that expressed to me any interest, if I posted on the community page, anyone who expressed any interest in being involved in this, I emailed each and every one of them. So it was not anyone that I do... I don't know Thomas Watson. I don't know any of these people actually on this. There's literally, if you express an interest to me, I shot an email back to you. Hey, you're an opportunity. So that email went to every single person that reached out to me after I posted on the community page, so... But I think on the town website, we can do a better job of, you know, going forward of getting more...
You guys are warming Phyllis Hall's heart right now. Phyllis always said that, we need more new people.
13 is great. What's typically done with the candidates that don't make it? Do they get any notification at all?
Yeah.
Okay, and then once we finalize the 21, Mr. Mayor, are we now going to send out letters of acknowledgement to all 21?
They'll have to be sworn in like every other.
Okay, because a lot of them are asking for that information. I said, I think they're waiting for the last three members to be added before the official acknowledgement is sent out. Because they're saying, I'm hearing that I am, but I haven't received anything.
Right.
So, okay, so they'll get that now?
Yes.
Okay. And everyone who's on the committee will have to be sworn in if they're not already...
Yep, and the letter will say all of that also.
Okay, excellent, excellent. So we still have the motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion on appointing Tom Watson to the committee?
I have something afterwards.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. So that gives us a full slate on the appointments to the community branding. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Board.
Just food for thought here. What you did obviously yielded great results. You just sent an email and alerted people proactively. Maybe whenever we advertise for anything, Sherri, just send each of us, you probably already do it, or something, but send each of us a, here, forward this to your friends or to whoever you know for any posting that we have, so that...
Yes. Put it on the website and send us a link. Like, you don't have to recreate the wheel, but it would have been nice just to, yeah, be able to do that.
But I think if I had an email that said, hey, this is what we're posting or advertising for, and I could just... Keep doing what you're doing.
One thing I want to add, 21 people is a lot of people on any committee or any board.
Absolutely.
If we could start developing now a list of alternatives, so if someone drops out, we could easily slide the next person in?
Well, I would agree with you on that, Tony. I would say that we should keep the list of 10 as potential alternatives in case someone drops out.
Perfect.
How's that sound?
Sounds great.
So we'll keep them active as far as that's concerned, and then if someone drops out, we'll have a pool to go into.
Yeah.
Very good. Anything further on Item B, 5B? Hearing none, let's move on to Item Number 6, please. Presentation, Act of Mayday. Request from the Traffic Advisory Committee to, number one, install a stop sign on Jordan Ave where it intersects with Park Ave. Do we have a motion?
I move.
I don't move to amend it, because they don't intersect.
It may be Dell.
It's Dell Ave that intersects with Park?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, I can see that from my house.
Okay, so the amendment would be not Jordan, it's Dell?
Not Jordan. Jordan runs into Dell. It's a little tiny.
Okay, so sign on Dell where it intersects with Park.
Correct.
So amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Thank you. Install two no-parking signs on the southbound side of Cedar Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Install a no-parking... Thank you very much. Install a no parking here-to-coner sign on the west side of Chapman Road in the no parking here-to-coner sign to be installed on the east side of Chapman Road.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. End of discussion. All in favor? Aye, thank you. A request from Jane Fanjoy of the Wakefield Lions Club to have Santa's headquarters be placed on the common during the week of November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, through December twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, and to have Santa arrive by fire engine on December ninth, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Moved, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I was waiting. Extension of the sandwich board sign pilot program. Due to the great results that the merchants and the town have witnessed by the sandwich boards being allowed to be placed on Saturdays at various locations, fifty various locations throughout the town, we would like to ask this board to approve an extension of said approval to June first, two thousand eighteen, with a caveat attached to it that if there are snowbanks on the sidewalks, that there would be no sandwich boards allowed while the snow is on the sidewalk. Just because you don't want to take up more room than the ADA allows.
So moved.
Okay, discussion, Ms. Valby?
What's the, what's the authority? Or how is, refresh me as to why or how we're allowing this?
Right now, so it's under the selectmen's authority. If we show...
Because it's our sidewalks.
And once it goes through, it will go, if we so deem that we want this, then we'd have to create it as a change to the bylaws. Where we'd have to come up with rules and regulations that would apply.
Correct. Under, that's, one of those areas that really isn't under zoning because the public way is under the, you know, jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. However, our signed bylaw does prohibit these anyway. So what we did is we did create the pilot program. It's run very well. We've had like maybe one or two instances, once it got up in writing that I can remember. And merchants seem to really like it. This is one of the items that the signed bylaw review committee, one of the many items that they're taking up. Have you taken up sandwich boards yet, or are they coming up at one of our future meetings?
They came up last time.
Last time, okay. Yeah, so we'll be coming back with a really comprehensive look at the signed bylaw, but we're doing this as a pilot program right now.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Yeah.
And again, this is just on Saturdays. This isn't every day. It's just Saturdays until June of next year. So the motion was made, seconded. Any further discussion on...
Have we had any ADA issues with these signs?
None.
Good.
And did we get fifty in the pilot program?
I don't think we got fifty.
We didn't get fifty. So I'm wondering, because it was only supposed to go through the holidays.
Right.
So if there was anyone else that wanted one till June?
If I'm not mistaken, all fifty are gone.
Oh, did they get...
Yes. So I don't think there's any right now that they can be given them. If they want to, I think the policy was that they can go and purchase one.
Right.
If they wanted another. We weren't going to stop them from getting one, but there were only fifty in the original pilot that were donated. So after that, if someone wants to do it, yes, they can do it, but they have to have that particular type of sign. Any other comments?
I'll just say that the signed bylaw review committee is hard at work now, and so we, I think that the idea of extending this just till June, so we can refine what may be, you know, a better policy or an enhanced policy that maybe is a little bit longer term or at least reviewable annually, I think we'll get there. But this, I think the merchants have been very enthusiastic about this program, and it certainly helps them. So I think it's an important thing for us to do for the community.
Is there discussion to open it up like Thursday through Saturday, once the weather's nicer, because there's so much traffic downtown?
Only through the discussion that I've heard, they would like it all the time. But once the signed bylaw committee...
Can speak to that.
Goes through the process and says, this is what we recommend in here, the rules that will govern it, should it become an official part of the zoning and not a pilot program, at that time, then they accept it when it's available, when it's not.
I just said, and the signed bylaw committee has considered so many different aspects of signage already. It's pretty amazing how many considerations go into it. But I think, you know, a lot of that will be considered in terms of A-frames, what can they look like? Are there parameters, you know, not just these A-frames, but A-frames generally, and hours and the like. So I think that that is all in the works, and I think in the next few months we'll hopefully formulate some really good ideas. But we're drawing from every community possible across the country on this, so it's pretty exciting.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let us go to item seven, warrant review and signing. Mr. Longo.
Nothing out of the ordinary, insurance payments, you know, interest payments, you know, classes for town employees, you know, supplies, most of them bought locally, which, you know, endears my heart. That's really about it.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight, man is not anticipated by the chairman within forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. Mr. Valby, you haven't been here for a while, have you?
It's your last meeting.
Which is my only question. What's the date again for our public hearing with National Grid? Or our public, some public hearing, my bad. Public forum.
I think the, the subcommittee will consider this tomorrow, but I think it's that we're looking towards December thirteenth at this point.
Did you say there's maybe two?
Probably two, but the subcommittee will take that up tomorrow. They've offered two dates. I suggested to the one, to them verbally, maybe one December, one January, so you know, but the subcommittee can take that up.
That's it.
That's it.
Tony, let's go to you.
Just really, my condolences to the Mark and Maloney families, you know, tough times down the year.
A couple things. The National Grid Subcommittee meeting is meeting for the first time tomorrow night, and the board certainly heard the concerns that were raised at the last meeting and were acting upon those. So I'm excited to be a part of that because I think that we'll be able to make sure that everyone's voice feels like it's been adequately heard. The other piece is, this past Saturday was Small Business Saturday. It was a great success downtown. The weather cooperated, and I saw the shops bustling, the restaurants bustling, which was great. Please keep in mind that every Saturday should be Small Business Saturday, so please try to shop local, especially during this holiday season. And speaking of holiday strolls this weekend, hope to see everyone come out for that. The weather should be great, and it's always a great event, so hope to see everyone. Thanks.
Peter? Just a quick question for Mr. Mayo, Tom Administrator. Any updates on the parking committee?
We will be certainly rolling that. The parking committee's met. They have some recommendations. Also want to discuss that with the downtown committee to see how that all fits in, but yes, they're coming.
Excellent. I've had a number of calls the last couple of weeks about a problem that's been going on probably for years, especially if you went to high school here. The Farm, Nahat, Hemlock streets is really a nightmare. It's really a dangerous life safety situation where I think we as a board have to act, and I think we should act this week. I'm not sure if Mr. Mullen or Mr. Mayo have any comments, but I'm suggesting that we put a police officer at that intersection, whatever the prime time is, from seven to eight, or seven fifteen to eight, whatever it happens to be. But I've had a number of complaints, and I think we don't want to get to the point where we shoulda, coulda, someone dies, someone gets injured. And I think everyone knows about this, and it gets pushed off every time it comes up, whether it's the union or there's not enough, not enough police officers to handle that time slot. And I suggest that we immediately do it and resolve this crisis, which is, it could become a whole nother ballgame if someone gets hurt or killed there. Students crossing the street, the traffic is horrendous. And even if we have to hire, the police have to hire someone, a police officer from another town, to fill that forty-five minutes. I think we need to do something as a board, and I'm amazed that no one, thank God, has gotten hurt to this point. So I suggest that, not sure how we can handle that, Steve, but that's something, I just, I know it's come up before, and we've kind of been pushed aside, I think, by some folks that either don't want to do it or the union says they don't have to do it, or whatever the reason, but I think it's time we take a forty-five minutes time slot and get someone there.
Is that something that we can address tonight at this point?
I mean, I'll talk to the police chief and traffic advisory and also the school committee, which hasn't weighed in on this with us.
Right, just getting enough calls where I think it's really, and it's happened, it's come up a couple of times in the past year and a half, but for some reason, I think it's...
I don't remember coming.
Yeah, I remember something about the union, or is there some issue with that? And I don't think it's a big deal. I think you should just...
Isn't there a white dot in the street for a police officer?
There was one in the past. There's been an officer doing a detail there in the past.
So, so whatever you can do, Steve, that's just one of those issues. And thank you. The last one I have, believe it or not, I just have one more.
Don't believe it.
The town yard waste permit. I think that we should give something back to the town. I think this is a twenty-five dollar item, maybe come, I think, the yard waste stickers or badge comes out every April, Steve, is that correct?
Yeah, every, yeah, every spring.
It's twenty-five dollars. It's roughly about fifty-five thousand dollars a year that will save the town residents. And just kind of a gesture that we're doing very well financially, maybe something to give back to the town. Again, we can look into this to get more information, to be sure. I've spoken with Steve and also Rick Stinson, the DPW head, to get an idea of what it would cost the town. I think it's a small, but it's a really nice gesture. Still, we have to make sure that they're Wakefield residents only, but I think it's, I think it's a nice gesture, so we should consider that. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So a few things. Want to echo everything that was said about buy local on Saturday. It was a great day to walk around town. A lot of the groups and organizations were out there. I can say this at our next meeting too, but the menorah lighting is scheduled for Tuesday, December twelfth, at five-thirty, which will be a great event on our commons. And then just a little update, Boston is voting on the plastic bag reduction bylaw on Wednesday. So Boston is following Wakefield's lead. That's it.
Thank you.
Just to echo, small business in restaurants this weekend were fabulous. And I, I know I shouldn't be forgetting, but I'm going to start calling myself counselor. And town council. So just as a warning, we was voted on a town, we was overwhelmingly...
That's fine.
Crushed a town meeting, so there's no reason for us not to. We do not have to wait at this board to call ourselves town council. Right, Tom? Casually around the table.
We just have to come up with a new name for Tom.
Right, barrister.
What do you want to call him? The day after town meeting, I got a call from the Assistant Attorney General, who's in charge of reviewing charter amendments. And she was skeptical because she said, generally, we see town councils as alternatives to town meetings. They are legislatures. And I, she asked me to send her a letter along with the package that the, that the town clerk sends, which I did. And in the letter, I explained, there's no statute and no part of the state constitution that says what a town council is. Any individual town may use its home rule powers to create a legislature called town council, but that's not what we did. We were as clear as we could be that this body will continue to be a board of selectmen, having all the board of selectmen's powers and duties, but will be called a town council, board of selectmen in all but name. I told her, I didn't put this in the letter, I think you guys can call yourselves a ham sandwich if you want to.
But if there's a city council, why?
That's a legislative body. That would be a legislative body, yeah.
City councils are all legislative bodies.
I hated the town council. I'm not enough to be vocal about it, but it's the legislative body in a city form of government. Yeah. You could not, a board of selectmen could not change things such as the number of you or the way you're chosen without going the charter commission route.
Right.
But you could change your name, that's clear. And all you did, all we, all town meeting proposed, was that you change your name. So I haven't gotten her reaction yet in writing, but unless I'm missing something very obvious, I don't think that we should have a problem. I move, we now call the attorney for the town Ham Sandwich. My strong preference, my strong preference is that you call me the town barrister. I like that too. I want the wig, I want the robe.
Mr. Tom, do you have anything else to add? Mr. Mayo?
Just one very quick thing. At the next meeting, I plan to give a very macro kind of budget sense of where we are, or where I hope we'll be next year, next budget as we enter the budget cycle. And if you have any priorities, please let me know, so I can, you know, work those out. Some of you have reached out to me, so please do so. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Just real quickly, looking into the next upcoming year, be thinking of things that we could possibly work on to make a change for the good of Wakefield and have something that we can present for two thousand eighteen. Things that should always be brought into light earlier than having it come up at the last minute. Off on another note, we had a strategic planning meeting, and we never came up with a secondary one. Can we schedule one to have the secondary part of that to finish off the strategic plan? So can we try to work on getting that established and getting that done? We also agreed that we were going to look into the Wingo program for the businesses. So if that's something that the town and this board wants to move forward with, that would need to be established and set into motion, that would run probably January, February, February, March, whichever we work it out to be. Other than that, the holiday stroll is this Saturday. All the selectmen are invited to participate and to come down and be a part of it. Please, there's lots of entertainment being planned for the event, so come on down and enjoy. What, Wakefield has to offer?
Mr. Chairman, when is the parade? I know that's one of the highlights. Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
Two forty-five.
Two forty-five.
Two forty-five.
Yeah, busy at that time. He'd look so nice in a hat. So without any further ado, Mr. Valby, would you like to?
I move, we adjourned.
I second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Even with an executive session, we got out of here.